I'm much just amazed that we're here tonight even considering getting rid of a person had that has brought us from where we were to where we are now with a lot of hard work, respect, and because she she believe in going by the rules, regulation that's in the book.
But I'm gonna say it now, this is wrong. And for somebody to not have any kindness or empathy or anything, shame on you.
Okay, we're gonna close public comment and we're gonna move on to council deliberation, discussion and action. We'll go down the line, Vice Mayor. Do you have any comments or anything for this?
No, I'm gonna pass.
Comment? Councilwoman Darms, pass. Can you speak into the microphone, sorry?
Well, I really basically want to pass. The only thing I will say is I have been a manager and I've had to deal with both hiring and dismissing, so I know this is kind of a double edged sword here. And I think we, I don't know, we have to really consider if you've ever been in a position where you've had that that ability. It's not easy. It ain't easy, I know that. And I really don't have much to say right now, I just wanna kinda keep absorbing and know what direction that we need need to go.
Councilwoman Tiamson?
Yes, so I went through all of the emails and I went through the context and I went through everything that was forwarded from the city clerk to all of us on the dais, even though it was, we were all blind copy, she was very careful about that, so we didn't violate sunshine law if we replied all, so she wanted to make sure of that. However, we were involved in this back and forth with the emails. It's apparent to me that there's some things that just do not pass the smell test, and I'm sorry that, you know, sometimes the truth doesn't care about your feelings and honestly, if you are doing something that you shouldn't be doing, you you have to be held to a higher standard. When you are a city employee, you are held to a higher standard. You're a public servant. You're higher standard than the general public. And I'm just gonna give you a couple of pieces of information, do with it what you will, but this is the facts. And referencing the employee handbook, as an employee of the city, the city clerk is also a public servant who is held to a higher standard than the general public with regard to general conduct and ethical standards. The city relies upon the public's confidence and trust in our employees to provide effective quality services. Professionalism is a significant factor in providing the highest level of service to the public, which in turn promotes organizational integrity, public trust and confidence and does not negatively affect the public perception of the city. So, on social media, you are prohibited from broadcasting or disseminating information via the internet the following: any material of which the nature is derogatory to any ethnic, racial, or other recognized segment of a society or which reasonable people could otherwise find offensive. I'm not going to blast it out there, but there are things that I found offensive and they did come from our city clerk. Referencing the City of Orange City Charter, Article 3, let me finish, please. Appointed officers, boards, and committees, Section 3.01, council appointments. The council shall appoint the following officers, boards, and committees. So in Section A, it says that a city clerk appointed by and removed by the city council by a motion requiring four affirmative votes, who shall give notice of meetings of the council, shall record, transcribe, and keep the minutes of its proceedings and shall authenticate by signature and record in full in books kept for that purpose, all ordinances and resolutions passed by the council. The city clerk shall have the power to administer oaths. The city clerk shall also validate by signature contracts made on behalf of the city and shall keep a list of outstanding city bonds, when and where payable and the rate of interest they respectfully bear. The city clerk is directly responsible to the city council as the representative of the legislative branch and government and may perform supplementary duties as assigned by ordinance or resolution of the city council. Nowhere in there does it say that the city council does not have the city clerk reporting to them. It is true, the city clerk is at the pleasure of the city council. They are supposed to be an unbiased... I'm sorry?
Excuse me. No calling out. Thank you. Go ahead, you have the floor.
It's okay. So they're supposed to be an unbiased record keeper. They're supposed to administer oath. They're supposed to oversee municipal elections, administer support, and city council. So, when you're talking about retaliation, the emails are, you got the chicken before the egg. You got the egg before the chicken in some cases. You're doing it all wrong because what you're looking at is you're looking at a timeline that does not make sense. There were emails that were put out prior to any involvement with the mayor. The mayor absolutely in those emails that were sent out to the whole city staff and the city council, the mayor did try to make amends and say, "I don't understand why you think that this is the case." And you can read the emails yourself because it's been posted all over Facebook. And so, anyway, if you look at the timelines, you can see that. And what I say by what doesn't pass the smell test is regarding those, how do I say this? Those Facebook Messenger posts between the mayor, which she was not the mayor at the time, that was Gary Blair, and the, yeah, my deceased husband, thank you. She was vice mayor. He was vice mayor. He was vice mayor.
Excuse me, she's got the floor.
Yeah. Anyway, so he was vice mayor, correct. We were in Iceland on a vacation.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Tiamson, can you address the council, not the crowd? Thank you.
Sure. And so, and at any rate, my husband was on... The timeline of the 11th is when the mayor asked for the contract for Kaylee Burleson. And if you read it in the emails. And then when I read the next email, it's the 12th, and they're having a conversation about food. And when you read Kaylee's presentation, if we're talking about people overstepping their bounds, I believe it was her, because of the information and the way that she went about it, maybe that should have gone through HR and not through the whole entire city council. I feel like it's a breakdown in the trust and also how are you going to present yourself in that manner and it still continue to flow properly? It's just not going to do that. So all of these things that I'm reading and all of these things I'm reading for Florida senate laws and statutes and what constitutes a city clerk, it's not tit for tat on an email. It's not who's gonna win this and who's going to do all that. You're supposed to hold yourself to a higher standard and that was why I went through and meticulously looked at all of the reasons why this, when we're looking at her performance, what I was looking at. So this was, this is why it all came about. So that's where I'm at with that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Richardson?
As a member of Orange City Council, I want to make my position clear regarding the discussions surrounding the employment of our city clerk, Ms. Burleson. I have only served on the council for a short time. Ms. Burleson has consistently gone above and beyond to support me in my role. She has taken the time to answer every question I've had, no matter how small it was. She has always made herself available when needed. With Orange City already going through major changes, including getting a new city manager and a new city attorney, this is not the time to make another big change by moving, removing our city clerk. We need stability right now and keeping Ms. Burleson in this role is important for keeping things running smoothly. Ms. Burleson is not only a reliable source to this council, but is a true asset to the City of Orange City and to the work we are doing for our residents. Letting her go at this time would create unnecessary disruption and slow down the process and progress we have tried to make. For this reason, I do not support any actions to terminate Ms. Burleson. I fully support her and continue serve her as, and continue to serve as city clerk. And I believe her and experience are important in our city to move forward.
Councilwoman Stafford?
What I would like for the council to consider is, Councilwoman Richardson stated, this is not time for a change. Kaylee has done, went above and beyond her duties as a city clerk. If you call sticking up for your staff as being insubordinate and disrespectful to someone that's bullying your staff, I don't understand it. I don't understand why we're here tonight. I really don't understand. I'm sitting here all night, don't understand the purpose of us being here. We have had a young lady who has worked with us for five years and has done an excellent job. And Madam Mayor, just on the meeting that we had on November the 12th, you just complimented her on an excellent job she's doing. Also, Councilwoman Darms, you said she is the most transparent clerk that we've had. She has provided us with information that we don't usually receive. So, I mean, I'm not understanding the reason for this. I really don't. Because this young lady, Ms. Burleson, has been outstanding. She has looked at the heart of the city. She knew what it was important about in the city, the messenger's message that everybody keep referring to. And since everyone is referring to it, I feel like since I was one of the persons in it, I should be able to speak up and speak out. It was downright, downright racist. It was downright disrespectful and no disrespect to anyone alive or dead. I had the utmost respect for Alex Thompson until I read that. I looked at him as a true nonpartisan person who loved people, who had a love for all people. I looked at him as not seeing color, but seeing the person and what we can do to better our city. My, as you said in the, I said my city because I take pride in my city. And which, all these people are people that have elected us to be watchful and like you always say, be conscious of how we spend their money, which is not being done by this council, by this council. So, I'm, I'm much just amazed that we're here tonight even considering getting rid of a person that has brought us from where we were to where we are now with a lot of hard work, respect, and because she she believe in going by the rules, regulation that's in the book and not because anyone told her to. She followed this book and she loves her staff, she loves the people she works with, the City of Orange City, even though your staff here, when staff come in here and they get to know the family, it's like a family. We might be related by blood, but our staff people have looked at each other as part of their family. And when you attack their family, the only thing they can do is come out and support them and let you know that this is not right. And so, so one of the things that I am really speaking on, I am not in favor of releasing an excellent worker from a job that's been well done and we have told her that on several occasions, so why are we trying to dismiss her now?
I have a kind heart. I have empathy. And I have genuine love for people in my heart. I make mistakes. We all do. But we gotta man up and admit when we're wrong. Then you gotta look at yourself and you've gotta decide, what could you have done different? What could you be? How could you change? I managed 230 employees that reported to me at the bank for 20 years. In 20 years' time, I never, never terminated an employee without having a conversation and disciplinary action first. I think the emails and stuff that went back and forth could have been handled differently. I think you should have sat down and had face-to-face conversations with an HR rep present. The way this has been handled is ridiculous. I'm embarrassed. I'm sad. I'm upset because we used to be friends and I used to try to tell you, you need to be careful about how you word things and how you present yourself. I tried to help you.
She don't care.
She don't care.
And I know there's been some issues with us and that's okay, but I'm not gonna sit here and lie because I've already been caught up in that once and it ain't gonna happen I don't agree that we should terminate Kaylee. Kaylee's been there for every one of us up here and if any of you sit up here and look at me and tell me different, you're lying. You go to her, you ask her for stuff and she's on top of it, she gets it for you. Now this email and all this social media business, I hate to tell y'all, I found out that stuff was leaked by other people who had requested it. Someone, I don't even know who, sent it to my personal email address and I don't even know how they got it. So y'all need to be thinking about that. People mess up. People make mistakes and people handle stuff wrong, front to back. It ain't just Kaylee's fault, it's your fault too. Both of y'all could have handled this much differently and we wouldn't be sitting here Now, I'm not, I'm sitting here, I stand on my own two feet, I'm not afraid to go against people up on this council. Because when I ran for office, I said I would stand on my own two feet, I'm my own person. But I will say this is wrong. It's wrong on multiple levels. I'm sorry Alex got pulled into this. I've always respected him because he always gave me good information and gave me good direction. But I'm gonna tell you, I was sad when I saw that. Because I don't wanna look at Alex any different than I did when he was here. But it made me sad and it made me sad for you to have to deal with it. The only reason I haven't said anything about any of this stuff is because I wouldn't touch it with a 10-foot pole. But I'm gonna say it now, this is wrong. And for somebody to not have any kindness or empathy or anything, shame on you. Don't know what's going on in people's lives either. And even though we gotta check stuff at that door, sometimes it's difficult. It's difficult for me to sit up here tonight because my husband's fighting prostate cancer and he's going through radiation treatments and our plan was to spend quality time together tonight to watch a movie, instead I'm sitting up here. Now, again, this could have been handled differently. And if we were smart, we wouldn't look at terminating, but we would look at sitting down and try to figure out how you could work it out. That's how I feel on both sides. I'm gonna be fair, I'm not pointing fingers in one direction or the other, but I'm telling you, this is wrong. And y'all need to be thinking about that. And if you can go home tonight and look yourself in the mirror and say, "I've never done anything like that in my life," then you're lying to yourself. Because I know I have been insubordinate in the past, I'd be lying to myself. So it's something to think about, something to think about. I've gotten aware, I'm almost embarrassed to sit on this council because I'm hearing from Deltona, Deland, DeBarry, New Smyrna Beach, we're laughing stock.
Yes, we are.
And that is not what we got up here to do. We got up here to bring this community together, not tear it apart. What are we doing? What are we doing? I love Orange City, I love its citizens, but for God's sake, think about what you're I will not support terminating Kaylee Burleson.
Excuse me. I'm gonna answer a couple of questions and then we're gonna move on, okay? So first of all, I always thought Kaylee was a good clerk, I really did. But things changed in the last couple of weeks with these emails and all that. When we're having discussions through email like that, it's not acceptable. It's not, I clearly asked for her contract on November 12, or November 11th from the interim city manager that evening and I actually, I texted her, I think, and I said, "I'm trying to call the clerk's office, but nobody's answering." And I said, "I called twice and nobody's answering." And she, and I was working and she was working and I said, she said, "Well, it's Veterans' Day." And I said, "Duh, okay, I'm so sorry." I said, "When you go in in the morning, will you get a copy of her contract for me?" She said, "Sure." She sent it to me the next day. Soon as I got that contract in my email, as well as I think you all did, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's when it all blew up with emails about the council food and, you know, different, the different things I have here of the emails. Excuse me. No shout outs. So the bottom line is, is, you know, we went around and around about the food thing and... Excuse me. One more time and you're out of here. One more time and you're out of here. Okay. Excuse me.
I know you all are passionate, but please, let her speak.
Chief, can you remove her, please?
I'm glad we leave.
Thank you. I really just want to get through this meeting, that's what I'm trying to do here. I'm calling a 10-minute recess, thank you. We'll return at 8:17.
You're not leaving, are you? Worried about her. This is beginning. This is just the beginning. I'm not going.
............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ Are you tired?
In the, uh... Nice, I know I did. Some ass favors, you know. But at any rate, I had a bolt broken, engine blocked. Well, no, I didn't break it. I did not heal it, I hired a guy to do it, I did everything, but I hired a guy, he kind of ripped me off. But I got the new stud. I didn't even think it's hot, it's just...
Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. Okay, at this time, Mr. Waters, how do you, how should we proceed with this?
Okay, Madam Mayor, we have a motion and a second, I recommend we call the vote.
Okay, can the clerk call the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Graham?
No.
Councilmember Stafford?
No.
Councilmember Richardson?
No.
Councilmember Darmes?
No.
Councilmember Knight?
No.
Councilmember T. Amson?
Yes.
Mayor Marks?
Yes. Okay, so the, uh... The motion fails, and the meeting, motion to adjourn. Now, get order. I just need a motion to adjourn, please.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye!
Motion adjourned.